Salute to the New Mexico flag by Counselwoman Villarreal and an invocation by Counselor Vehil Copley, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all, and to the flag of the state of New Mexico and to see a symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
We pray tonight that we make sound decisions. Thank you, Lord, for everything that you have provided us here tonight. We are thankful for the St. Michael's visitors and welcome them. And we're thankful for the University of Arts and Design, which offers us a wonderful place to plan for the future, especially the thought of City Hall maybe being here someday. Thank you for everything and we are hopeful that we have a wonderful meeting tonight. So I want to open it up for anyone who wants to express any condolences.
Thank you, Mayor. Are these on?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to send prayers to my tio Amadeo Villarreal who will be traveling to Houston tomorrow for cancer treatment and we hope it goes well and everything's okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? So I would like to express condolences to the family of Judge Sarah Singleton and Lynn Pickard, her partner. I was fortunate to work with both of them and just want to express that Judge Sarah Singleton has and had, I guess, a brilliant mind and made some very sound decisions that affected New Mexico and our education system. And she was quite a brilliant jurist actually when she served on the court and otherwise. And she had quite a sense of humor and I know that the judiciary is sure going to miss her. And that's a sign from her now that let it be heard. Anyway, we send our love to Lynn Pickard, Judge Lynn Pickard. Thank you.
Let's take one second to just remember those folks who stand here in silence for...
Well, all right then. Could you call a roll, please?
You bet. Mayor Weber?
Present.
Counselor BETA?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Lindell?
Here.
Counselor Rivera?
Here.
Counselor Merrill Worth?
Here.
Counselor Vehil Copley?
Here.
Counselor Villarreal?
Present.
Thank you. You do have a quorum present, Mayor.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
There a second? Okay. Could you please call the roll on that?
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil Copley?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes from the regular city council meeting of June 26th. Are there amendments, changes, corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Counselor Rivera, you have a proclamation you wish to lead us in.
Mayor, I'll leave you your part to read when it comes to that time, if that's okay?
I'll wait in the wings till you're ready for me.
So first of all, we've had a great season for athletics in Santa Fe. A number of teams throughout the city from Capital, Prep, Santa Fe High, of course, Santa Fe Indian School. And we're here today to honor St. Michael's Boys Track Team. So you guys had an amazing season. I'm sorry this is so late, but when the end of your season is at the end of summer, it's hard to squeeze everybody in. But I'm glad you all made it. I'm glad you're all here. Coach Fernandez and I go way back, so it's great to see a fellow St. Micer come back and be able to lead the future athletes at St. Mike's into such successful seasons as he had in both football and track. So I'm from the class of eighty-four, so I'm glad to honor you all here today. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then the mayor will end it with his great part of it. This is the office of the mayor, official proclamation of the city of Santa Fe. Whereas St. Michael's High School is a learning and teaching community committed to excellence, whose mission is to ensure the success of diverse learners through rigorous, relevant, and challenging explorations, empowering students to find success as they further their educational experiences in the spirit of faith. And whereas the Boys Track and Field Team exceeded other teams in the state of New Mexico, capturing the 2019 AAA Team State Championship, 2019 AAA District Championship, and seven Invitational Championships. And whereas the Boys Track and Field Team had four Relay Team 2019 AAA State Championships and three Individual Event 2019 AAA State Champions. And whereas the team was made up of a diverse group of young men from our community who exemplify the diversity that makes the city of Santa Fe great. And whereas each coach, volunteer, parent, and athlete was an integral part of the team. And whereas the players were encouraged and assisted by the support of their coaching staff, Joey Fernandez, Joey Butler, Kevin Hock, Gary Merrill, Sean Chafens, Pat Hakanadel? Hakanadel? And Lenny Gudley. And whereas today we recognize the St. Michael's High School Boys Track and Field Team for their skills and determination, which led them to a great finish and coalesced the students and faculty around the team's uplifting run to the 2019 AAA State Championship. And I did want to say here before the mayor takes his part, we did have some athletes here that were part of Matt's... They're Matt's children. He used to be in the city. He was a great part of the city. And if you can stand up just so I can see who you are.
Go ahead, say it.
So when I was talking to your dad about doing this, he told me about your relay team and how fast you guys were. And I used to run relay in track too, but never as fast as you guys were. Okay, Mayor, thank you.
This is the good part, I think. This is the big finish. This is we're kicking across. Now therefore I, Alan M. Weber, Mayor of the City of Santa Fe, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, July ten, 2019, as St. Michael's High School Boys Track and Field Day. Congratulations.
Coach Fernandez, I don't know if you want to step up to the podium and say something and I'll meet you there with the proclamation.
Well, I just want to thank you guys for having us here. These guys, tremendous athletes. They worked very hard during the season to get where they were at. Great bunch of coaches that helped them get to where they're at. This was our first ever state championship in Boys Track and Field, so it's been a long time coming. And if it wasn't for these boys, we'd still be looking for another one. So congratulations, guys.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor?
May we have the team stand up and turn around so that the audience can recognize them?
Congratulations.
Thank you. I would also like to give this to you, Mayor Weber. It's a T-shirt. A state championship T-shirt that says St. Michael's State Championship.
I hope it's large.
I didn't know what size.
Extravagant.
Thank you, guys, and congratulations and many more great seasons to come.
I just wanted to add a few words, being the parent of two daughters who ran both... Well, one who ran cross-country, the other played soccer, but both of whom participated in track and field at St. Mike's. One graduating in 2005, the other in 2008. I know the amount of time you have spent in practice and really committing yourself to prevailing in events that are challenging at every age. So just wanted to say a special thanks for all that hard work and for the pride you bring to St. Mike's. The athletics there have always been a hallmark of the success of the school with coaches such as Mr. Fernandez, one of whose son was a best friend of my son way back in the day. So thank you, guys, for all the hard work. Pays off and we'll hope to see you here next year.
Counselor Merrill Worth?
I just want to echo Counselor Ives. Congratulations to the team. You are... The school sits in District Two and is the other District Two Counselor. I just want to wish you special congratulations and have a great summer. Thanks.
Counselor Abada?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate the track team and also want to recognize Coach Kevin Hock. Coach Hock was my football coach at Capital High and High School. And he had, I can't tell you the influence he had on me and my brothers and all of us that attended Capital High in the nineties. So thank you, Coach Hock, and I'm glad to see you're still contributing.
Coach, if you'd like to tell us some stories later about what it was like to work with Counselor Abada, we're open. We will keep it all... That's not helpful. Go to the microphone, sir. We don't want to stop you. We just want to hear you.
I believe Counselor Villarreal was also a very good hurdler in her day because I coached against her when I was the head coach at Capital. And she was one heck of a track athlete also and I was good friends with her grandfather, Mr. Manamiera.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing us.
Oh, we're glad to have you here. Any other? Yes?
I just want to say, how many of you are seniors? Just three. So you have a strong team coming up next year and congratulations on graduating and also on your accomplishments for your sports. And also Joey Butler's mother was my volleyball coach back in the day. So that's how the sports network goes in Santa Fe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselwoman. All right. Any other congratulatory notes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to congratulate St. Mike's. I was a cheerleader for Santa Fe High, so I can't say anything about really St. Mike's sports except that you all had good teams most of the time in my day. And you've got some great teams now, so congratulations.
Very well said. Thank you. Appreciate you all being here and congratulations. Item number eleven in our agenda. You all don't have to... You don't have to stay. That was the best part. You're welcome to stay. If you want a civics lesson, you can stay. If you want to go do something fun, it's summer. All right. We'll see you at another... We'll see you next year. All right. Let them... Let's let these talented young people leave. Okay. Mr. City Manager, item number eleven brings us squarely to you.
Mr. Mayor, counselors, coming down the table is a one-page handout, which is a set of bullet summaries about ERP. I thought now that we've had the go-live date, it was a good time to remind ourselves of what got us to this point and what we should expect from here. So if you look at the side of the page that has bullets, I'm going to start there because this is a reminder of our original action plan from a little over a year ago. And as we inherited this project that was a couple of years going and we knew that we needed to get to an end line with it because we knew how important it was going to be to the business of the city of Santa Fe, to the residents, to the visitors, to the people who work in the city. And we wanted to make sure that we had an idea of how to get there. And so we started by doing the first bullet, which was to commission and conduct the IVNV, which is independent verification and valuation, or the reverse of. It really is a study on what happens with projects like this. It turns out this was a very automatic thing that we had not programmed into our processes and so we did it. And the resulting bullets, or the rest of the bullets, are the result of that IVNV. And so just to run through it real quick, what we wanted to do was establish a project framework that viewed the ERP as a single project rather than a bunch of fractured projects. Build a project management executive team that was both technically sound and fully committed to stay on the length of the program and beyond. Reform the project management methodology to establish an internal onsite project manager instead of what we were doing, which was having a lot of the work done by contractors. In doing that, we wanted to do the third bullet, which is refocus the training of key staff to establish a clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities. And then build a training program for our employees that would contribute to the overall success. We identified the must-haves for each of the module and discarded actually a bunch that we didn't think was going to end up with a good, solid product. And then in doing so, prioritized what we were doing. There were a number of overdue tasks that had been building up as we were getting off course. Things were not being completed like they should have been, so identified them, put them back on schedule, and then used training sessions to catch up on a lot of the incomplete tasks. Ultimately, that was very useful because the training helped prepare our staff to take over. Just as a side note, now our training, which we logged about 400 hours, over 80 sessions over the last month, 85% of it has been done by our own employees, which is a real success because it speaks to the sustainability and that was in large part because we changed our course of action. We identified the most appropriate role for the contractors and in the case of a couple of them, we followed the contract and actually asked them to slowly make their way out so that we could take over with internal... Build our internal capacity with our executive management team. Validated what had been done by previous employees and contractors and reviewed to make sure that the data was going to transition over when we got to the go-live. We defined a whole new decision-making process and reestablished an executive steering team, which still exists. Established testing methodology and performance measures to make sure that the program was going to be implemented well and successful into the future. And then we've established regular schedules to make sure that the infrastructure was moving parallel, that infrastructure that we have that supports IT was moving in parallel with the ERP implementation. So that was what we said we were going to do. If you flip the page over, here's some bullets. Here's some questions and answers about the ERP in general. So the first one is what parts of ERP have gone live and the answer to that is Munis Financials. And as you all know, that was July 1st, which was actually on time for what we said it was going to be. And also very impressive on budget in large part because of, again, what we just read on the back page, which is we asked our contractors to minimize what they were doing. We created a whole new team internally and have continued to be on budget while building a capacity to have a sustainable program, which is pretty amazing. Second question, how does Munis Financials benefit the public? Well, it's a major shift towards becoming user-friendly, which obviously is... Excuse me, paper-friendly, sustainable, which obviously is one of our big priorities. It is user-friendly and it improves our transparency, which is excellent. And it's also a lot more reliable and does a lot better reporting than what we currently use. So all of that's not only good to our staff, but the public as well. Question three, how does the new system benefit the department's staff? Well, if nothing else, it's extremely efficient compared to the old. It'll help us do our day-to-day operations a lot better and it'll improve our cross-training with all the different systems and processes that we use in finance. Fourth question is what training is available for Munis Financials? Like I said, we've done over 400 hours and 80 sessions to get us ready, but it doesn't stop there. We've committed to continue training. It's like any other system. You can't just assume it's good to go and stop. With the internal capacity we built, like I said, 85% of our user training is now done by our own staff, which is huge. And we've also set up labs so that as people learn new systems and they get concerns about, do I know how to do it right? You can actually go to the lab during normal business hours and practice with people who know what they're doing. So that'll continue. The next question, how does the new system benefit vendors? Really, vendor's going to be excited because they can do everything a lot more streamlined than they were before and they can do it from afar. They don't necessarily have to come to City Hall like they had to in the future. Can they still come to City Hall? They can, but they don't have to. So that's extremely beneficial for vendors and it'll streamline our finances. So theoretically, they get paid quicker and better than they were in the past. What's the next phase for ERP implementation? The next phase is the land use portion, which is EnterGov and that's slated to go live July 27th. We have been doing a testing process with the new system over the past few months to make sure it's ready to go. And we're doing training with people who might be using the system, so it should be ready for a go-live and that's the next phase. And the last question is what exactly is EnterGov and what are the benefits? It's a long answer. I'll let you read it, but the short of it is it's going to streamline our land use systems so both our staff can do the things they're asked to do quicker and better. And also it's going to be better for our contractors and our builders. They're going to be able to do things without even coming to City Hall. Again, like Munis Financial, they'll have the ability to do it at City Hall. If it's more comfortable to somebody, they can still do it the old way and show up with a packet of plans and get it done. But for those who don't want to, they'll be able to do it from afar. So that's the next phase. This is something that has been a huge burden for a large number of our staff members. We brought in some pretty brilliant people to help guide us through it, most of whom are really excited with what's going on and have committed to stick around for quite a while because this is an exciting time in the city of Santa Fe. It's not without bumps. Any change is hard, especially when you pull up a whole system that has been running the city for decades and decades. People get very comfortable with it. And we fully expected it. I would think you all should expect to hear grumblings about it for probably a few years. But I think in terms of solutions coming in to make our work better, this is a resounding success. And to take it from a little over a year ago with the bullets on the back page to what it is now is something that I think leadership here at the table and city staff and the team that's been assembled should be pretty proud of. That's the status of ERP and as far as the city manager updates, that's what I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matters from the city attorney.
Yes, Mayor Weber. Is this working? It sounds different today. Members of the council, just a couple of things. One is that we're very close to being able to send you the live portal for reviewing proposals. The way we have it currently is not as accessible as I would like. You'd have to be tied into the city system, so I'm going to try to work with IT to get that fixed because I'd like us to be able to access it more broadly. And then once we have that happening, IT will be sending out passwords to each of you, which will be just a starting password and then you'll be able to change it to your own password. But basically it'll be from the city website and then you'll have your same username you use now for everything else and then that password that you can change right away. use now for everything else, and then that password that you can change right away. Finance is already starting to upload proposals to that portal, and then they're searchable by date and by name of the RFP or the contract. Then the next thing is that we do have an appeal on our next governing body agenda. I did send out notice of that previously. Sally Paez will be sending out available times to sit down with any of you who'd like to review the case in advance. So we'll be doing that. And then finally, if someone would like to make a motion to go into executive session, it would be appropriate in order to discuss matters that are litigation that is either threatened or currently pending against the City of Santa Fe.
Counselor Rivera, are you in the mind to make a motion?
Sure, but a question first for the city attorney. So I'm scheduled to be out of state starting July 17th. What is that appeal about?
The appeal? It's July 31st.
What's it in reference to?
Oh, it's Dos Esecios.
Dos Esecios?
It's a land use, it's a planning commission appeal regarding a development.
Is it in District 3, or?
It is not.
Okay. All right, with that, Mayor, I move that we enter into an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1, H, Subpart 7, for discussion of threat or pending litigation in which the governing body is or may become a participant.
Sir, second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Yes. Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor of Mayor Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vehelcopter.
Yes.
Counselor Vialle.
Yes.
Counselor Beeta.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is approved.
Thank you. We will go into executive session. I think you have a room set aside for us to be meeting in, and we'll be back when we complete that business. Is it, I assume it's safe for everybody to leave their technology in this room, or do we need to take our stuff with us? People will be here? Okay.
Make a motion?
Sure. Pursuant to the Opens Meeting Act, Section 10-15-1J, I move that the governing body...
Are you okay?
I know how to deal with this if we need it.
The governing body reconvene in open session and state for the record that the matters discussed in the closed session were limited to those specified in the motion for closure.
Second, is there, is it clear who made that motion? It was a tag two, it was a relay. All right, so there's a motion, there's a second, could you please call the rule?
Yes, Council Ives.
Yes.
Council Rivera.
Yes.
Council Romero Worth.
Yes.
Council Vehil Coppler.
Yes.
Council Villarreal.
Yes.
Council Abeta.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has been approved.
All right, very good, thank you. We are back in session and we are taking up item number thirteen.
Mayor Weber, members of the council, this is the AMIT settlement amendment. And as, as discussed in our executive session.
Very good. Is there, is there a discussion or is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
No?
I would, I would just like to state for the record that I have property that is covered by AMIT in the Nambe town. And after discussion with the city attorney, discussion and a vote on this, on my part, would not be a conflict of interest.
Okay, so it's not a conflict, so you're clear?
I'm clear.
Good, thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Okay. Could you call the rule, please?
Yes. Council Rivera.
Yes.
Council Romero Worth.
Yes.
Council Vehil Coppler.
Yes.
Council Villarreal.
Yes.
Council Abeta.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Ives.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you, motion has been approved.
Motion carries, thank you. Item fourteen, are there matters from the city clerk this time?
I have none, thank you.
Okay. Since we're in a very straight line, it's hard to look around and see everybody, why don't we just start down at my, my right? And Council Romero Worth, if you want to start with communications from the governing body, we can just look at items that are being introduced or other items you wish to speak to.
Thank you, Mayor. I am introducing two items tonight. A resolution declaring the intent of the City of Santa Fe to issue industrial revenue bonds in the amount of up to eighteen million dollars to finance the acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipping of a high-pressure processing facility in Santa Fe for the purpose of inducing New Mexico Fresh Foods LLC or its successors or assignees to undertake the acquisition, construction, renovation, equipping, and installing of such project. And then another one, unfortunately, I don't know how to abbreviate these, so you're just going to have to bear with me. An ordinance of the City of Santa Fe, New Mexico authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of its taxable industrial revenue bonds for the benefit of New Mexico Fresh Foods LLC in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eighteen million dollars for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipping of high-pressured processing facility in Santa Fe. And with those two items, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Council Harris.
Thank you. I think we're going to hear some public comments, but I had already given myself a note earlier today when I was getting organized for this meeting that the fireworks were kind of out of control in much of our town. And this pre, you know, preceded the Fourth of July and then has gone on even through last night. I talked to the city manager about this on Monday. He had a comment about why he thought that there might have been more activity than the past years, but it's certainly something that we're going to have to get out ahead of next year because it's, I mean, I, I happened to see, I was in a place, somebody was shooting off fireworks at the top of grass, excuse me, the top of Sun Mountain. And that's how widespread it was. But mostly, it's the south side of town that was really experienced.
I also wanted to acknowledge John Romero and the extra effort he made to organize the Royal Chanista Crossing kickoff group. That was last Tuesday, was attended by Council Vehil Coppler and myself.
It was well-attended, forty, forty-five people probably, kind of equally split between people who were, seemed to be for the project and seem, and then others who had concern. But it was a kickoff that was not required as part of the DOT process, and I thought it was important, and I think the people who were there appreciated it. So, but anyways, John Romero gets a lot of points, as far as I'm concerned, for pulling it off.
Thank you.
As well as, as well as our liaison people, Izzy Sharp, as well as Jeremy Perea and Christine Helsake helped to organize this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Council Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the city manager for the update on the ERP. Recently, I was going through some boxes of materials and came across my copy of the Presidio report and began reading it again and began weeping again. So it is wonderful to see that we are at the stage of implementation and that this is happening after a process which has taken approximately seven years to get to this point. So, thank you for that update.
Very good, thank you. Councilwoman Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still don't think my microphone's on. Can you all hear me? Okay. It just doesn't sound like it. But I'd like to introduce a resolution accepting a grant, excuse me, that's Council Rivera's, and I'd like to co-sponsor that, so I'll let him read it. A resolution relating to public service, the Public Service Company of New Mexico's Palo Verde Nuclear Generating Station investments and the financial impact on ratepayers and support for an alternative renewable energy-based replacement plan. And I'll read another one that Council Lindell and I are co-sponsoring. It's a resolution accepting a grant from the New Mexico Department of Transportation identifying a DFA appropriation to acquire rights, rights-of-way for and to plan, design, and construct lighting and sidewalk improvements along Harrison Road from Surrios Road to Awofria Street. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Council Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I am introducing a resolution co-sponsored by Council Abeta and now Council Villarreal. A resolution accepting a grant from the New Mexico Department of Transportation identified as DFA appropriation, IDD 3408, NMDOT Control Number C5193408, to plan, design, and construct rights-of-way improvements to Awofria Street and South Meadows Road. I also wanted to take a moment to thank all the city staff that helped out with the Southside movie night. If you missed Moana, you missed a good one, it was really interesting, especially with the grandkids there. Our city clerk was spinning cotton candy like a pearl, along with her husband, and then we had several staff from the mayor's office and the council liaison office that were there, serving as MCs, and they did a really great job, as well as many volunteers as well. We've also had some volunteers from a local church that have been at Swan Park and also at the Southside Library that have been working along city crews to help clean up some of the weeds and just make the area look really nice, and I wanted to thank those churches and our own city crews for doing that. And then the city crews themselves, or regular city crews, have been on the south side cleaning up Airport Road, and if we can thank them for that, they're doing a great job out there in such hot conditions. So if I would have had time today, I would have taken them a cooler of water or sodas or something, but they're out there doing a great job, so if you can thank them, Mr. City Manager, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilor Abeta?
Thank you, Mayor. Just echo what Council Rivera said, we appreciate all the activity that's taking place in District Three. I'm introducing this evening a resolution relating to a request for approval of fourth-quarter year-end budget amendments for fiscal year 2018 and 19. And along with Council Lindell, I am introducing an ordinance, repealing ordinances 200333 and granting a new non-exclusive franchise to Comcast of Eastern Shore and Comcast of New Mexico, Pennsylvania, to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the public rights-of-way and to provide cable service within a franchise area within the City of Santa Fe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Vehil Coppler?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo Council Harris's kudos to John Romero and to the constituent services staff, and let the city manager know that we did offer those as well to Regina Wheeler during the Public Works Committee meeting. And whatever you can do to follow up on giving thanks, that would be great.
Thank you. Great. I have a couple of things just to share. First, I, I think Council Rivera's comments about Southside Summer are really spot-on. It's just turning into an amazing festival. There are hundreds of people there, hula hoop competition. You mentioned our city clerk, you left out our police chief, who was doling out popcorn until they ran out of popcorn, it was so popular. So, check the schedule for upcoming Southside Summer activities, there's another great film coming up at which both police and fire personnel will be there. So, it's going to, it continues to really flourish and people really enjoy it. Another coming attraction is this weekend, we have another international folk art market this year, and bigger and better than ever. Last year, you may remember that Nobel Prize winner Mohamed Yunus was the honorary chair. This year, it is the grandson of Nelson Mandela, who is the honorary chairperson. Countries represented from all over, including the United States this time, for a first time. And it promises to be a wonderful Santa Fe-only kind of a, of a festival. I don't think it could happen anywhere else. Ratings came out today from Travel and Leisure Magazine, you may have heard about it. We had three of the best spas in the country. We had the best hotel in the United States, and overall ranked second to Charleston as the city of choice in the United States. So, a pretty good trifecta for Santa Fe, according to the readers of Travel and Leisure, and congratulations to the proprietors of the spas and the hotel. It's quite something to get that kind of national recognition. Finally, a word of request for help. I went to the Immigration Committee meeting yesterday and was there with Bill Smith from the Community Foundation and Kira Ochoa. We continue to send support to refugee, refugees and immigrants seeking asylum here in New Mexico. The Children's Corner is that we helped finance, that we did, the city and people of the city financed, is now resident in deming and being used by the children who are fleeing their, their situation in their countries. We're continuing to try to raise money in all, all amounts, small and large. It continues to be important to send money there. The Santa Fe Community Foundation website has a very prominent button that you can go to and, and hit contribute. Whatever anyone can afford is very helpful, five dollars, ten dollars. Get ten of your friends to each give ten dollars. Bill Smith is making good use of that money to support people who are coming into New Mexico, deming other parts of the state, looking for their way out of New Mexico to their ultimate destination, and we can continue to support them by making those kinds of contributions. So that concludes my comments from the governing body.
Can I add one additional?
Yes, sir.
Just to remind all the committee chairs that I'll be out from September seventeenth, returning August second, so if I can be excused, July seventeenth to August second, and if I can be excused from any of the committee meetings, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and maybe the city clerk can make sure everybody gets notification of that so that there's no confusion about your whereabouts.
Thank you.
Very good. So that wraps up the five o'clock session, it's seven oh five. Let's commence with the evening session, and we'll start with petitions from the floor. If you would like to speak to the governing body for two minutes on any subject, the city clerk will be keeping a clock so we can be brief and to the point, but just line up against the wall over there and give us your name and address, and you may speak to any matter other than the public hearing that will be later tonight. If anything you have to say speaks to the public hearing, wait for the public hearing. So with that, whoever wants to go first, please begin. Check and make sure the mic is on, though.
Hello, is the mic on?
Yes, sir.
Hi, councilors. Mr. Mayor, I'm Jonathan Glass. I spoke to you a couple of meetings ago. I'm here again to talk about the forest. I'm very glad to hear that the City of Santa Fe is getting a lot of national recognition. I am afraid that we don't want, that we may be, may be recognized for our leadership in environmental destruction proximate to our state's capital and our great city. Today is the last day of the comment period for the Forest Services Today is the last day of the comment period for the Forest Services Project, for which you know they want to remove the majority of trees and vegetation from around 40,000-plus acres of forest right by our city, up the mountains, on the other side of Hyde Park Road, north and south of our watershed. And I am speaking against this project. I don't understand it, as I've already told you. And it's a great opportunity today because the reading room of the Forest Service is accumulating comments that have been posted by the public, and I encourage all of you to read those comments and see what the public thinks. It is not encouraging for the project, and it is really important that we all understand what is going on. And I want to point out that the, and just nudge everybody in the direction of thinking about the city's membership in the Greater Santa Fe Fireshed Coalition, which has as its mission strategy and operating principles, the belief, the common belief among members that the strategy of restoring the health of our departed conditions and a lot of other verbiage that does not make sense unless you spend a lot of time decoding it is something that we might not want to participate in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. I wanted to thank all of you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Linda Wilder-Flat. I live in Los Acechus. But I'm also wearing another hat tonight. I wanted to talk about, just for a moment, the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Food Drive, which comes in September. And I wanted to thank all of you for supporting this over the years and continuing to help us be so successful. Every year, we have improved. Every year, we have gotten more and more food, and that makes such a big difference in our community. I want to thank you for doing the resolution and continuing to have a resolution saying that you will support, not only with your energy and your enthusiasm, but also you help with providing city vehicles and staff, which makes a big difference. Last year, we did 241,000 pounds of food. This year, our hope is that we do over 275,000 pounds of food. That actually equals more than a half of a month's worth of meals for those that are in need. So my hope is, is that this is becoming a tradition. More and more people know about the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Food Drive. It is extended into the county. It is both city and county cooperation working together. And I want to thank all of you for that. And I invite all of the councilors and the mayor to come the day of the food drive this year, which is September 21st. At that time, we have had other, in other years, we have had councilors who have come and actually gone with the trucks and helped pick up food, which really makes a big difference. And people get very excited to see their councilors out there helping. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Roper, and I'm from Los Acechus. And I'm here to ask for consideration of change to the code for the fireworks. The area I live in is completely surrounded, not the area, but the apartment I live in, is completely surrounded by fireworks from before dark till 1:30 or 2:00 in the morning for the last 12 nights straight without any letup. I've called the fire department. I've called the police department every night for 11 nights. I've gone out twice on my own, looking for a good address to give to the police department because I know their job is, they have their hands tied in so many ways. What I would like to suggest is that the code going forward for fireworks is not based on whether or not we're in a drought, but taking into consideration the mental health of your citizens. It has been absolutely exhausting this year, and I expect it to continue tonight, in all honesty. I feel like I'm living, I feel like I'm a prisoner in my own home, like I'm living on the front lines of some next world war. It's so disconcerting, and I've heard from other neighbors who are in much worse condition than I am mentally and physically, that have a really hard time dealing with this just nonstop, 12 days straight now with fireworks. So please take the consideration of our mental health into consideration the next time we rewrite the code for fireworks. I've been in touch with many of you. You probably, a lot of you know my name. And I've gotten unbelievably wonderful feedback from the mayor's office, from the liaisons, from my councilors, from the chief of police. It's been very, very encouraging to know that there is such good feedback from the people that are trying to help. If I had a magic wand, I would give you all a great suggestion on what the solution would be. As soon as I can get my hands on one of them, I'll let you know what the solution might be for this issue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor and city councilors, thank you for your time and for your attention. I'm here to say Smokey Bear is wrong.
Can you give us your name for the record?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. It's, I'm Diane Oldenburg. I'm a former Forest Service initial attack firefighter. I've been on numerous fires, large to small, throughout the West. And the Santa Fe National Forest proposal is arrogance at best and hubris at work to think that lightning will strike in areas that they have devastated. There is no comment about climate chaos in their scoping documents. They're not even aware of how many inventoried roadless area acres are in the proposal area, which is the largest project they've done on the east side of the forest in decades. There are endangered species that are there. There are inventoried roadless areas and a potential for wilderness expansion. And their hubris comes, they're working the wrong way. They're working from the outside, sorry, from the inside out. They will clear up to 90% of trees in some areas and burn them. And then in the spring, they will drop incendiary devices from airplanes while birds are nesting. We have three endangered threat and bird species in the proposed area. Coyotes will be denning, bears will be denning, and incendiary devices will be raining on them from the sky. We need to flip the equation of inside-out to outside-in to say, let's work with homeowners. I live in the wildland suburban interface, 100 yards from the Pecos Ranger District. Many of my neighbors are elderly or of limited means. They need help with things like cleaning their gutters, making a fire-safe perimeter around their homes. There are far more effective, energy-efficient, climate-based solutions. And this is going to be a huge human rights issue. Throughout the West, the policy of the Forest Service throughout the country is to go to the lowest bidder. The bidders consistently hire undocumented workers. It's grueling work. I've done it, cutting slash, thinning, piling brush really, really hard, and they won't pay them. They'll threaten to turn them into ice. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Emmy Kaponen, and I'm, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, councilors and mayor. I am so tired of fighting this. I wanted to propose something, but first of all, the EIS is really important. I grew up in a good era. You know, the Wilderness Act in '64, which is being stripped, we're under a very dangerous time period. Trump has an even worse proposal. This is a federal thing now, the Santa Fe Mountain Landscape Resiliency Project. Now, I would just like to speak about resiliency because I have hiked on the Rio and Medio Trail and seen the ferns from the wildfire, and it did rearrange the river as the two rivers that jump at the bottom, which happens with nature. But in a prescribed burn, the recovery, I mean, I was asked, well, how are the Forbes doing after I walked in the Bacheko Fire, the burned area? And not so well. It's very close to the ditch that runs into, I believe, Chupadero. If not, I saw trees that exploded from, and I unfortunately do not have the little ping-pong that I found on my walk because the plastic is thicker. This is an era of fighting fossil fuels and trying to improve our landscape and our woods. So I would like to propose that the city work with state forestry. And as a former tree planner, I would like to get on a huge tree planting campaign. And I've been a teacher. I can work with youth. I'm very good at, and it would just be something positive instead of us always, you know, being pushed backwards trying to be forward. So I would love to have some support doing that. I miss working with children, and they could be doing something positive, too. Even these little places in the city that are fenced out for, I'm not really sure why, but they could be wonderful projects, and the children could have something to look forward to. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephanie Benanato, PO Box 1601, Santa Fe, New Mexico. I want to talk about the ADU meeting last two weeks ago. It was the first time ever that I've seen signs being used at a city council meeting. I think it's not used at federal or state levels. They're not allowed into a public hearing because it is considered intimidating. And again, all the people who were speaking for, or were supposedly for, were really speaking about affordable housing, and that's not what it was about. And I don't know why they were allowed to speak. And in the Santa Fe Reporter, it said they were just practicing civic engagement. Really, we should have been having people who were really focusing on the ADU instead. The other thing is that Ms. Johnson, again, has misrepresented to you. Not only do permit appeals go right to district court, they are not reviewed for standing by Ms. Johnson. That is, when it goes from an H Board or the Planning Commission to the council. Also, you need three to 15 days to get the plans because you have to do a public records request. So you might be timed out before the appeals period is, that you've even seen the plans before the appeals period runs. And the city keeps insisting that everyone's going to do what the law requires, which is posting it at 24 hours, and that is not true. The other thing, excuse me, is that now we have, we have an experiment going on, and so we're going to have less public participation because the city land use is now going to come in with proposed findings of facts and conclusions of law for the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment at the time of the hearing. So what are they going to do? Develop three or four findings of facts, conclusions of law, assuming where a board will go? Because what that says to me is they're trying to push the board into a certain direction rather than allowing the board the autonomy that it has. It also will increase the amount of time for your legal staff. And I was told by Ms. McSherry that no lawyer could meet with me about the defamation in the recreation reports because there were so many legal service demands by the other city departments that not one city attorney had 15 or 20 minutes to meet with me. That is outrageous. And you are denying us due process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is, my name is Karen Weber. I live here in Santa Fe. I am a teacher in the Santa Fe Public School District. And I'm here to speak to you as the governing body for the city of Santa Fe, which will be greatly impacted by this Santa Fe Mountain Landscape Resiliency Project that you've already heard about. I have pressing concerns about this project, and I just want to highlight them for you. You may be aware of them, but it's always good to hear them again. My first concern about this is air quality. As you know, chemical accelerants are used to start these prescribed burns. And so besides the toxic fallout that we have from the smoke itself, we also have air pollution with small particulate matter from these chemicals. It's a known fact that even short-term exposure to such pollution has harmful effects, especially for those suffering from weak, weakness of lungs or lung disease. Recently, studies have even shown that children are adversely impacted in their cognitive thinking from such pollution. And I would be very happy to send you any links or studies to confirm this. Secondly, this project includes going into roadless areas of the Santa Fe National Forest. This also impacts the environment, the wildlife habitat. And although the Forest Service is not creating new roads and is going to even decommission some old roads, they will need to expand the roads that are going to need to be used to bring in equipment and the people who are going to be doing the prescribed burning and thinning. This can potentially take away the eligibility for that area, for those areas to be wilderness. That protection can be taken away permanently by doing this. And as you're familiar with the Wilderness Act of 1964, wilderness designation protects those areas for the future enjoyment and use of the American people as wilderness. Very, very important. And I have a grave concern as well, that by going into these roadless areas, we are also seeing the project open them up to further development and extraction, as we are seeing with the mining project near Torero. When I spoke to the Forest Service about this, they could not assure me that this would not happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who wishes to be heard at this time on the petitions from the floor? Okay. Thank you all for speaking. Move to appointments, and I'm wondering if the city clerk could walk us through the list of appointments.
You bet. For Veterans Advisory Board, Chris Calvert. Reappointment term ending 5/20/21. Kenneth Dettelbach, Housing Service. Reappointment term ending 5/20/20. Hannah Sigrid Mabel, Veteran. She's a reappointment, term ending 5/20/21. Dorothy Seaton, Financial Services. Reappointment term ending 5/20/20. Anna Vehil, Veteran. Reappointment term ending 5/20/21. Kenny Keelen, Homeless Service. Reappointment term ending 5/20/21. Colonel James H. Williams, Education and Training. Reappointment term ending 5/20/21. And John L. Palomino, Housing Service. And that is to fill an unexpired term ending 5 of 2021.
Thank you. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Could you also walk us through the Water Conservation Committee, please?
You bet. Beth Kirby, Education Programs. Term ending 7/20/21. M. Deanda Hay, Land Use Policies. Term ending 7/20/21. Gerald Jacoby, Technical. Term ending 7/20/21.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The item H is a public hearing, and I just want to review the process for a public hearing, as much for my own benefit as for anybody else. Because I don't always get it right, do I, councilwoman? And it's harder for you to kick me when we're this far away. So here's the process. First, anyone who is here who wishes to speak, we'll start first with the staff presentation of this item, this matter in front of us. Then, after the staff presentation, there will be a time for public testimony, and we'll ask you to keep it brief and to the point, followed by questions from the governing body, discussion by the governing body, and then any motions that need to be made. So that's the kind of quick overview of how this will proceed. So we'll begin with the staff presentation to walk us through this hearing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir. This is case number 201897, 4327-4323 Airport Road rezoning, Liaison Planning Services, Inc., agent for Rudy and Julie Rodriguez. They requested rezoning from R1 to C1. The rezoning request is to rezone .32 plus-minus acres of 4323 Airport Road by adjusting the C1 zone district located at 4327 Airport Road. the C1 zone district located at 4327 Airport Road to incorporate that particular property of .32 plus or minus acres. Property is located at 4323 Airport Road in approximately 10.66 plus or minus acres, and if approved, an administrative lot line adjustment will be done to consolidate the .32 plus or minus acres and create a new zoning boundary line along that new property line between those two lots. Uh, both properties are located in the Southwest Area Master Plan, Airport Road Overlay, and within the Suburban Archaeological Review District. Uh, this particular application has gone through the Planning Commission twice as a result of an error in, in public notice. So the Planning Commission actually looked at this particular application twice. Uh, the second time the application went through, they did receive, uh, support from the neighborhood at that meeting. The applicant, uh, did agree to some terms of the neighborhood for barriers, uh, along the adjoining property line between the, uh, the Los Ososakias subdivision and the particular property that will be rezoned, and the applicant has agreed to those terms. Uh, the governing body should approve case number 2018-97, uh, 551, uh, 4327 Airport Road rezoning as recommended by the Planning Commission. There is only one motion that needs to be made, approve or deny the rezoning request from R1, residential one dwelling unit per acre to C1, office and related commercial uses. Uh, the applicant has addressed all of the approval criteria pursuant to Section 1435 rezoning, which included, uh, notice for public hearing and notice for ENNs. And with that, Mayor, I'll stand for any questions.
I think we'll hold that till the governing body gets to that point, but I did leave out a step, which is if the party wishes to speak after the staff, we should make that opportunity, uh, now before we open it up to other public comment.
Uh, if I might add again, uh, Mayor, uh, members of the council, the applicant has agreed to all of the conditions relevant to the lot line adjustment, and it has already started meeting those requirements, including submitting, uh, the necessary engineering requirements that we requested.
Thank you. So let's listen to, uh, the applicant, and then we'll go to a public testimony after that, and then we'll have questions following that. Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Dolores Vehill. I'm with Liaison Planning Services.
Ms. Vehill, I'm going to swear you in if I could. Please raise your right hand under penalty of perjury. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. As you know, my name is Dolores Vehill, and I'm here to just put into the record that we have reviewed all the conditions and we do agree with them. Um, we've done quite a few, um, you know, uh, applications because we did, um, screw up on the, uh, noticing. I apologize for that, but we are here to answer any questions that you may have, and we greatly appreciate you approving this rezoning at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if there are questions, we'll come back to you, uh, later. Uh, anyone from the public who wishes to, uh, speak to this now? If you could, uh, limit your comments to say three minutes, that'd be great. And, uh, take a, a turn at the microphone.
Cheryl Odom, 1152 Welta de Los Ososakias. I live in the Los Ososakias subdivision, which is directly, um, behind this project.
Excuse me, ma'am? I need to swear you in.
Excuse me?
Swear you in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay.
Under penalty of perjury, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
There you go.
Um, I have been, since I moved to Los Ososakias 22 years ago, I've been to a lot of, since they passed this resolution, I've been to a lot of neighborhood meetings. And they usually run a certain way, which is not pleasant for anyone in the room, frankly. Um, it's very divisive, um, and so on and so forth. And I have to say, this was not that experience. It proves to me that neighborhoods can meet with developers and property owners and come out with a solution that everybody thinks is great. And this is probably the first time I can say frankly that, that the neighborhood feels great about this. I think the developer feels great about this, and I'd, I'd like to see more of this, where everybody meets, everybody puts their cards on the table. You have a nice, excuse me, friendly discussion or two meetings if it's necessary, and then you can arrive at a conclusion that's acceptable by everyone concerned. And this is exactly what infill is. What is happening here is basically an infill project, which I'd like to see more of in Santa Fe. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for, to Dolores and her team. They were great.
Thank you for coming tonight. Yes, sir. Would you care to address the, uh, governing body and introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Fabian Trujillo. I'm the president of the Los Ososakias Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. Under penalty of perjury, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to read a letter that the, uh, Los Ososakias Neighborhood Association, uh, that we voted on in support of this project. Dear Mr. Mayor, dear Mayor Weber and city councilors, the Los Ososakias Neighborhood Association consists of approximately 653 homes located in the heart of Santa Fe's South Side. There is a population of approximately 4, 4,890 people. Our residents are working, middle-class families who take pride in our community and are concerned about land use issues that impact our neighborhood. The Los Ososakias Neighborhood Association Board of Directors met on May the 2nd, 2019. During this board meeting, the land board members discussed the rezoning by Mr. Rodriguez in the aforementioned case. The land board voted in support of rezoning and a lot line adjustment for this case on the condition that the barricade is erected to protect the Los Ososakias sign, which the, which they've already agreed to. The fence for the 30.3332 acres that borders the Los Ososakias community is where our land sign is mounted. This rezoned property is slated to be a parking lot for the current businesses located at 4323 Airport Road. We would like a barricade erected to protect vehicles from hitting the fence and our sign. Uh, the reason we're asking for that is because that has happened several times in that area. The land sign is important for our neighborhood because it provides identity for our neighborhood and is the main entrance, and it's a source of pride for our neighbor, neighbors. Um, we recently just purchased a new sign by contributions through a neighborhood fundraising campaign, and, uh, therefore that we request that the city council require the owners erect this barrier. So, so, uh, that's what we have to talk to about tonight. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, others who wish to be heard on this matter? Are there questions from the governing body to, uh, staff or witnesses so far? Yes, Councilor Mayor Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a quick question, the barrier that was just referenced, is that part of what was already accepted?
It was at the Planning Commission as a recommendation to this body, and they did accept it at the Planning Commission.
So do we have to, when we make the motion, does that barrier have to be included, or is it already included?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilor Mayor Worth, what we'll do is, since we don't really like to place conditions on ordinances for rezonings, is we will attach that and affix it to a condition of the lot line adjustment, and they'll just, they'll bond for it and, and submit it with their engineer's cost.
Okay, so there's, it doesn't require anything?
Right.
From the governing body tonight?
That's right.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Dan, did, uh, did Traffic look at the, um, intersection at Atahua and Airport Road? I know there's a lot of people that make U-turns to get into this property. Was there anything to, um, address that?
Um, Mayor, uh, Councilor Rivera, uh, we send all of our comments to the Traffic Division. Um, I believe that their comments are located, and they did have some conditions, which we're, we're, we're dealing with at the lot line adjustment, which is part of why they had to submit the engineer's cost estimate for the development. What they wanted them to do, what John wanted them to do, is to reduce, uh, the driveway that they have down to 35 feet, and they've agreed to that. Um, but as far as the intersection is concerned, he did not mention that in his comments.
Okay. Did anyone at any time bring up maybe a no U-turn sign, or?
Not at all. Um, the second term that he wanted was to make sure that we had some right-of-way up at the, up at that corner near that intersection that we wanted because of some of the utilities that we have there.
Okay. And I don't know if this is for you or the applicant, but there are current, there's currently another, uh, business on, on that property. It's a food truck, I believe. Um, is that set to stay there, and will this affect the parking at all?
Um, Mayor, uh, Councilor Rivera, the food truck is actually a function of the itinerant vendor's ordinance. So the, what the inspectors do is they take a look at how many parking spaces are located within a piece of property, and then they determine whether or not that truck can stay there, uh, without impacting the businesses so that their parking standards don't go below the minimum standards. So if there's a food truck there, then those inspectors have already identified that they're, they're good to go, and what the applicant is doing is adding more parking in order to services his clients. So there, there wouldn't be an issue at that point in time.
All right. There's also a, a drop-off location for, I believe it's clothes and other things. Or, uh, actually haven't seen it there in a while. I don't know if it's still there or not. Is that to remain?
I'm not sure. I'd have to defer that to the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, um, Councilor Rivera, there is not a drop-off for clothes that I've ever seen. Um, I've been working on this for over a year. Maybe they have removed it, and if you would like them to remove it, I'm sure they wouldn't have a problem doing so.
I was just curious as to what their plans were. And do you know what the plans are for the food truck?
I don't.
Okay. Tell that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the rezoning request from R1 to C1.
All right. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion of the motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I attempt to add a friendly amendment that the Traffic Division look at the intersection again to see if it warrants a no U-turn sign? Since that didn't seem to be part of the discussion initially.
Would that need to go in this motion, or is it better as a direction to staff to follow up, um, and do the kind of thing you were describing with, uh, the, uh?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor.
Further attachments rather than adding it to the motion?
Yes, Mayor, I would prefer that that be a condition of the lot line adjustment as opposed to the rezoning ordinance, and that way we can, we can, we can ask John to revisit that.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion. We've had a second. Is there any other discussion? No? Okay.
Councilor Mayor Worth?
Yes.
Councilor Vehill Coppler?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor Beta?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Ives?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Motion is approved. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your testimony. Uh, that completes tonight's business, and we are adjourned. And it's starting to warm up in.